I now invite everyone to stand forward, the Karakia. We'll start. Grand, grand. So, welcome everyone to the inaugural meeting of the Infrastructure Committee. Please let the Democracy Advisor know if you need to leave the meeting. Morning tea is at ten thirty. Apologies, I'm an apology for lateness from councillor Foon. Any other apologies? Anyone need to leave early? Okay, well, I move the motion that we accept councillor Foon's apology. Do I have a second, Deputy Mayor Free? I now put the motion which has moved and seconded, those in favour press one, and against press two. Where's everyone else? Is the question, I suppose?
I call on members of the Kaia a conflicts of interest that they may have in relation to the agenda. All right, good. This is the first meeting of the Infrastructure Committee, no previous minutes. There are no items on the agenda. I just want to say that we've got a really big day, couple of days folks, so it'd be great if we could get through this pretty quickly. We have got one member for public participation today, so I'd like to invite Andrew Cox to come forward. Andrew, you're representing yourself, not an organisation? Scotch Kiwi, okay. Is that a... Sounds like a beef company. Okay, well, Andrew, you'll have five minutes. I'll give you a heads up with one minute to go that, you know, to start your conclusions.
Well, I'm very impressed with the Brooklyn bicycle lane, the uphill bicycle lane. When I'm... Does anybody can not hear me?
Yeah.
It says it's switched on. Green light is on. Okay. Okay, well, I'm very impressed with the Brooklyn... I've said that. When I'm driving my flatmate's car, I know exactly where I need to be on the road, there's no question, that's where you should be. Before, it was a maze. And when I'm riding my bicycle and my trailer rig, I feel safe. Okay? Now, I designed an above-ground-level bicycle lane system in 2017. I decided to stand for mayor. There's no risk of me getting a job, but I thought I'd get to know you all so I could talk to you at a more personal level, okay? So, yeah, that's fair enough. I hope you will allow me to talk... Yeah, that's fair, that's this meeting. I'm asking to be allowed to become... I asked to talk to the Finance Committee about this because I considered it would be the... It would be a vitally important first step towards solving... No, where is it? This one's for Jenny. To the whole of the Wellington environment, to allow the existing system to work... I can't remember, what's the name of that word? That's that... Jenny, you're the one that's got the rapid. Yeah, to allow the existing system to move rapidly, okay? Right. Now, I just wanted to comment, if you spread out at ground level, you create winners and losers. And you all lose brownie points, no matter which colour of the political spectrum you come from. You spread out at ground level, you create winners and losers, and if you create losers, you lose brownie points. The space above the ground is infinite, there is no limit, or hardly anyway. At ground level, we ran out of space in 2017, and I sent all of you, except Jenny and the young lady here, who are new. I... Originally, originally, I sent a complaint about something, and I got a message back via Grant Robertson, Honourable Grant Robertson, that the council from... Mr Lister, the mayor, ex-mayor. The message from Grant was that he said, "The council know they have a problem, but they don't know how to fix it." And that's when I started working on how to fix it. Any questions? Oh, by the way, we do not need a downhill bicycle lane on Brooklyn Road. That is not necessary.
Thank you, Andrew. Do we have any questions for the seminar? Councillor Spurrow?
Thank you for that. Elevated cycle lanes, I think, make sense, but the biggest problem is the expense involved in constructing them. How do we pay for them without increasing...
Absolutely, absolutely. I've talked to a lot of professionals in the construction and all sorts of industries, service industries, and they have assured me, well, they haven't assured me because they don't want to be the person who signs it off, but they all reckon that it's much cheaper to put services up there than it is in a black hole in the ground and on a black hole in your balance sheet. Because you put it up there, it's an investment in the future.
Deputy Mayor Free?
You put it down there, it's a black hole.
Just quickly, you do live in Brooklyn, don't you? Is that right? Do you live in Brooklyn?
Yes, I do.
So, and you are thinking the cycle way is working well for you?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Perfect. I rode up it last night, about...
Are you hearing much from your community yourself?
Well, I'll be honest with you, I've been so busy lately, I haven't had time to talk to too many people. Oh, my chess playing mate, Avon Mora, at the area, I play chess with him, he complains about bicycle lanes no matter what, on principle, so, yeah, he's complaining.
Okay, all right.
Most customers here, they come in the door.
Andrew, I don't think we've got any more questions. Councillor Matthews, I'll let this indiscretion pass first time, but if you could all shut down your phones and stuff, that'd be great. And, Andrew, thank you so much for that insight, appreciate it. Yeah, that's good. All the best, mate. And I overtook Andrew going up Brooklyn Hill, I don't think he got to the top. All right, folks, so we'll move on to general business. Better pop my glasses on, otherwise. Invite, and 2.1 Tanaka General Updates, so I understand that Danny McCurn will give us a briefing on that. Danny, do you want to... There you are. Come up, introduce the paper and answer any questions.
So, the paper today is really a baseline first report through to this committee, really just setting up the... Where we're sitting with the significant Tanaka related projects. So, really, it was to try and give you a sort of a heads up as to what's happening at a high level on those projects, and then basically set the scene to say that we'll now implement a more formal quarterly reporting process through to you, or more frequent than that, should the circumstances necessitate it. So, essentially, just touching on some of the things, I didn't really have a lot to add to what's in the paper, but the key issues coming through from a town hall perspective are really all around programming cost, and effectively, one drives the other. So, programme has risks around it, and it's largely a result of the complexity of the actual construction project there. So, if you go through, it's dealing with a very old building, every part of the building they touch, the amount of temporary works to make sure that the environment's safe, that the existing structures, well propped up, et cetera, are quite significant. So, that complexity is driving pressure on the programme. Cost side of things, apart from the programme issue, is really just in terms of where we've got to, the Wellington construction market, and you'll hear this just about on every project or coming through from the sector itself. The market is very, very white-hot, and that feeds through into costs. If cost escalation carries on through the length of this project, that's where we're starting to see those cost pressures that are indicated in the paper itself. So, we've still got quite a lot of time to go on this project, so with 2021 halfway through, this has still got two and a half, three years to go, so a lot of opportunity if that market basically keeps being white-hot with basically capacity constraints, then we start to look at that type of scenario where we're coming in over budget. Te Mata Pehi, the main thing here really is, what's going on is all of the securing all the procurement contracts, et cetera, and we're dealing with the viscous dampeners issue. So, really, that's now running a two-stage process to have a look at whether viscous dampeners really does deliver any significant wins for the project whilst we continue with the design work on the base isolation scheme. If the viscous dampeners basically does turn out to have any merit, then we'll pivot quickly and turn into what that looks like, but that'll necessitate coming back to you guys as a council with respect to the decision that was made to base isolate, and that would be quite a significant change in the scope of that. In terms of the Tanaka framework, consultation closed on that late last week, so we're now going through those. Fair to say, most of the submissions were really from inner-city residents and focusing primarily on Jack Eyelet Green, so that it was a little bit of sort of interest group focus in terms of the participation. So, but we'll come back to you with the... What that looks like, and any changes that we think are necessary to the framework for you to consider before that framework gets adopted. In terms of the other building blocks there, we've started work on the conservation plan which we need. So, if we think about what we need to do for Mob and Cab, we've got to basically work through the foundation documents we need for any resource consent application, which starts with the framework, moves into the conservation plan for the precinct, and then looks at what that would look like if you were to demolish Mob and Cab. What's the design brief? The design brief will be informed by the Tanaka framework and also the conservation plan. So, that works basically progressing and supporting the decisions you've made through the LTP regarding Mob and Cab. So, that was pretty much what's the main sort of highlights on there, and I think what we'll do as we go through with this committee is we'll just get slightly more depth on those, and move to more milestone reporting around what the status of the projects are, the costs of the projects. So, we'll beef out this report through to you as both a tool for information, but also to bring up any issues that are arising in the projects that you should be aware of.
Thanks, Danny. So, we've got some questions from councillors Fitzsimons and Young, if there's any others.
My first question relates to the town hall, because I remember when officers came back with requests for increased funding from the council, it was sort of on the edge of most people's comfort, and I just want to know, I guess, how close it is between the potential overspend and the contingencies and the likelihood that you'll come back to us with further requests for additional funding?
Yeah, look, and I'd like to sit here and say, I promise that that's as much, but in many ways, this project is a little bit about price discovery as we go through, that it's not a fixed-price contract, and so the risks that we're dealing with, the complexity of that project, they're being well managed, but they are what they are in terms of that. Cost escalation, we can't do a lot, we're a bit of a victim of that. There's been some offsets to date in that we've had a good strong currency, so it hasn't necessarily fed through, but where we go over the next couple of years, if cost escalation goes much further than the QAs are indicating, then we're at risk on that side of things. In terms of the work programme, we still have some piling work to complete in the auditorium, so that piling work is our risk in terms of what they actually find on that, and then there's a significant amount of roof work, which is our work in terms of any scope changes on the roofworks.
I mean, I remember being told by, I think, the then-chief executive, Kevin Lavery, that the new model of procurement would protect us from changes in the market throughout the project. How come that hasn't eventuated?
Well, and I don't know what Kevin said, so I can't speak for Kevin.
I mean, I might be misremembering, but certainly, I had a degree of comfort agreeing to it, knowing that this, you know, do it once, do it right, and this is it.
Yeah, so the town hall, the town hall's not a fixed-price contract, so therefore it is open to variation in terms of the amount of work that's required. The risks that were taken on by council were all the risks around design of the piling structure, the depths of the piles, and in terms of the temporary works that are required to secure the building. So, they were risks that council took on, and so the procurement was never going to protect you from those risks. In terms of cost escalation, it's basically formulaic driven, that if the QS indexes go up, the cost of the project in terms of materials or labour goes up. So, in terms of that, they are risks that reside with council.
Okay, my other question is about Te Mata Pehi. So, I know of at least three councillors who, during the process leading up to the decision on base isolation, asked officers to consider dampers, and we were told, in fact, we had a meeting that was cancelled, that we were meant to be having with engineering, with an engineering company, and we were constantly told that, you know, this wasn't acceptable and it wasn't an option, and now we're being told that it potentially is. And I want to know what lessons the councils learned about listening to approaches councillors get from the community during these projects, which would have meant that we're not considering it now, and we'd considered it throughout the decision-making before a decision around base isolation was made? Because I took that objection from officers seriously and thought, oh, well, okay, I don't want to get involved in a procurement issue, I need to, you know, they're telling me to stay out of it, but actually, I wish I'd pushed harder, and I want to know what the lessons the council's taken from that.
And perhaps Tom or Barbara want to speak to that one rather than...
That's all right.
I think probably our main learning is, if we've got a member of the engineering fraternity telling us that this is a particularly viable option, then we probably need to listen and explore that. I think early on in the procurement process, we narrowed down the options, that was based on advice from several engineering companies across the city, including the one that ultimately approached us with the viscous dampener solution. So, I guess, I think our key learnings, we have to be more agile in reacting to industry when they approach us in that manner. The thing that slowed us down was really trying to land a commercial model by which we could engage with the company, explore the viscous dampeners without locking them in for the duration of the contract, and therefore, you know, not really adhering to best practice procurement.
And what impact, if any, and I did ask this question, and I'm sorry if I've missed it on the emails, but I am... Oh, here it is, but I'll ask it anyway, because I haven't had a chance to read it. But when we agreed to do the special consultative procedure on the library, there was agreement, the council also agreed, that the timeframes around the LTP wouldn't interfere with progress, and so that as of one July, we would be ready to sign the contracts that would need to lead to the library being strengthened as soon as possible, and that it wouldn't have any impact, that, you know, that not doing an LTP amendment wouldn't have any impact, and we'd be basically ready to go as soon as the LTP was signed off. What impact does a consideration of the dampers have on that timeframe? Are we still ready to sign up as of one July?
So, the way it's working is that the engineering firm will work through their scheme and basically prove up, the onus is on them to demonstrate that their scheme actually delivers what they say, which in a nutshell is a similar level of resilience for the building, significantly cheaper structural solution, and a quicker programme. So, effectively, we're running down that programme, and the outcome of that will effectively determine a different path than the one we're currently on, but whilst that work's being done, the project itself is carrying on. So, the initial parts of it is that effectively, you've got to lock in all of your key design consultants, so your architects, your structural engineers, your service engineers, your project management structure and that. So, that work's ongoing, and so the procurement processes for that are basically underway. I think by one July, we'll certainly should have the architects locked in and contracted. You won't get to a construction contract aspect, which is the main, that's the sort of the meat of the project, until you've finished your detailed design process, which that process will take, I don't know, probably a year to finish detailed design. But effectively, what we're trying to do is run the viscous dampener consideration alongside, so it doesn't impact on the timing of the project, and if it turns out that we need to flip to viscous dampeners, it'll be because that's a significantly cheaper option and it's quicker to deliver. So, while she might have more time because you're going back to not-quite square one, you should recover that time if the better scheme actually, or sorry, if the alternative scheme actually stacks up.
Thanks, Danny. Just wanted to say, I'm all in favour of supplemental questions. I find it frustrating when you ask a question and then you've got another one, so, but when you get up after three, can you just maybe ask, make sure it's okay, because I think you had about four or five there, so, councillor Young?
So, I think I have two questions, none of which are to do with... So, can you just tell me, Danny, in the media, there's been a lot of talk about the increasing cost and shortage of building materials. Will that affect the town hall at all?
So, the answer is potentially, the things that we're seeing coming through from the town hall perspective are, the town hall, strangely, it's a big consumer of scaffolding, so if you look around it, it's got scaffolding everywhere. Scaffolding's a particular problem for the industry, they're managing that by basically becoming hoarders, so they're not allowing scaffolding to come off the site, they're hoarding it, and so, but that has a flow on...
And taking the price up at the same time?
Well, effectively, that doesn't change their price, but it stops them having a problem, but it creates the downstream problems for other people looking for scaffolding. So, those types of supply issues are significant. Where you've got firm design for steel, you've got your steel locked in, but if you've got any changes to your design or you need any secondary steel that's not locked in, then it's hard to get, and so there's shortages of steel. So, there are material issues that are out there. I think some of our other projects, lead times in terms of shipping are proving to be problematical, so we think you might be expecting a delivery this month, the delays in both the shipping schedules and the New Zealand port processing times are significant. So, you're getting delays as well as basically shortages of supply. So, you may well have got the procurement process gone and you've ordered it, but it's arriving later than expected, and that affects your programme. So, I think across all of the programmes, it's slightly different. We're not seeing a lot on the Takina, and largely because our scope's not changing a lot, it very much affects scope, and so a lot of the procurement's been done early on that process. Some of the other ones that have basically a slightly different dynamic, where the likes of the town hall, that temporary work is basically being done as needed as you're going through, it's got a slightly different dynamic.
Okay, thank you. So, totally different question. When you're talking about cab and expressions of interest, you know, all that kind of stuff, I didn't hear you mention considering the possibility of reinstating the park that was so fabulous on that site, and along with the dolphins in the fountain, which are still trapped in captivity behind the city gallery in that very small pond, whereas they used to have lots of space to swim in.
I hear them crying out.
Is the park a possibility? Because, I mean, I remember from when I was a young journalist a little while ago, it was a great place to sit in the sun, very sheltered, have your lunch. You know, you could buy a sandwich, you didn't have to be in a cafe. And it was a great location, not probably at this time of the year.
Yep, and you probably won't be surprised by our answer is that we'll effectively work through the principles of what we want to achieve and the principles will start informing the outcomes as opposed to starting with outcomes and then working them back into the principles. So I think effectively as we go through, looking at what's the feedback through the public consultation process, what are the principles that are basically adopted by this council? Then the design brief will speak to that and we'll look at what those alternatives look like at the time rather than starting with a design and using it that way.
So third question, I think it's the last. So will we, I mean, many members of the public will be unaware that that was one of the most charming little parks in Wellington because it's been gone for a long time. Will we be floating it as a possibility or do we keep it as our dirty little secret?
No, and I think where you get through the sequence of events is the framework sort of sets the principles of what you want functionally from the square. The conservation plan basically speaks to the history of the square and acknowledges all of the very historic components. So that gives you a much broader look at where the square has come from. And so when you're looking at your design brief, you've got a much broader gambit than just we want multi-use or the principles that drive the framework. It gives you the broader context about Manu Finoa's interest in the square and also the history of the square.
Okay, no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Your Worship. Yeah, no, understood, understood. Councillor Conley.
Thank you. On the town hall, Danny, often with these projects, the risk reduces greatly once you're out of the ground. Is that going to be also the case in town hall? Or do we have further complexities once we're out of the ground? And how far away are we from getting out of the ground?
Yeah, look, and so the bits that we're still to come out of the ground on are the auditorium. So the areas around the auditorium, the piling's finished and the slabs are going down for that. So to come out of the auditorium ground, that will then be that and ground risk will be basically crystallised. I haven't got the scheduled date of when that piling's finished, but we can get back to you. But I think it runs through into 2022. And then the other big piece of work where there's a lot of sort of scope discovery is the roofworks. So they're our two areas where we've got a degree of risk still in terms of what we find as we go through that.
Thank you. And then you were talking about how we're mitigating the risk around scaffolding, but what's the risk mitigation that the team have in place around the issues for secondary steel and shipping lead times?
And apart from basically keeping your focus, knowing that basically supply chain is a risk you have to manage. I mean, that's the key idea. So effectively, it's getting in and procuring as early as you can.
And then just wanted to follow up on the viscous dampeners. Because one of the things I remember is staff giving us a verbal briefing at one point early in the Timatapehi process, saying that the staff's current view was that viscous dampeners were given equivalent to the medium resilience option. But now it seems that we're now essentially evaluating the performance to see whether it would be equivalent to the high resilience option. Can you talk about what's changed since that's advised and why we've then decided to pursue that?
Yeah, look, and I think the change, and Peter might have more to say on this, but I think the change is that the engineering firm is quite insistent and confident that their solution delivers the benefits that they suggest. The work that council did with the engineering panels in there suggests that that's not the case. And so what we've got is a bit of tension that the industry experts are saying viscous dampeners is not the solution that you think it is. And the engineering firm is saying, but we've got some IP that the Engineering Fraternity don't have that says we can deliver this solution. So I'm not sure if Peter wants to add anything to that.
Yes, I mean, there aren't actually many sort of tangible examples of using viscous dampeners to provide high levels of resilience. And then there's that hospital in Christchurch where they've used like 150 viscous dampeners. But the theory being through structural mechanics and the careful placement of a few viscous dampeners, it can dissipate the force through the building, give a high level of resilience. And that's the theory. So that's what we're investigating. All right.
Chair, I've got two more, if I may, on viscous dampeners.
Yep, go for it.
How are we evaluating, how are we going to evaluate the performance of viscous dampeners versus base isolation? Because obviously viscous dampeners is a very new technology and base isolation is a well-established technology. So how do we do that?
Yeah, so I think the process is Becker have to come up with, and it's not just a sort of a theoretical paper. They have to come up with a detailed paper that actually says what their solution is. It's fully tested, it's fully costed. And then effectively, that thing is going to be peer reviewed by an independent engineering firm down in Christchurch so that they have no basic skin in the game in terms of the Wellington Engineering Fraternity, who will basically test that the Becker scheme has all of those components, that it delivers the benefits, that it is actually buildable. They'll actually assess that. So it won't be us as officers saying, yeah, no, we fancy the viscous dampener solution or let's stick with base isolation. So it'll be subject to a full technical review.
Sorry, can I just add to that? Viscous dampers are not new. That it's an existing technology that's been around for a very long time. We've used it ourselves, it's happening across the city. What Becker is saying is that they have a piece of IP or a particular scheme that they believe can significantly reduce the number of dampers that are required, which is one of its problems and that is quite an intrusive solution. And secondly, that it can achieve levels of resilience that people thought it couldn't. So that's the difference. It's Becker IP rather than, viscous dampers are not at all new. They haven't developed them, they are existing, yeah.
Thank you for that. And then just finally, can we talk just through about what the difference is between the medium resilience and the high resilience? Because I think my understanding is the high resilience option, the idea is that immediately following a sizable earthquake, we could actually occupy the building immediately as like a civil emergency hub? That's, is that kind of correct understanding of what high resilience means? And how does that compare to what the medium resilience was supposed to deliver?
It is that, it is being able to reoccupy the building and start operating the building pretty much the next day. And there isn't a particular industry-accepted definition to the nth degree of what high resilience means, but that's probably the closest to it. And that's that being able to operate almost immediately after the event and that your building services are intact and that you are not having to spend many months even doing minor repairs. And that's where the workshop of engineers determined that the way to achieve that was through base isolation.
Deputy Mayor Frey.
Mine's a little bit more proacyc than any of those questions. It's just the floor plan for the town hall, you know, how it's actually going to be laid out once it's completed. How far down, how much thinking's been done about that? And how far down the track are we with it?
And the floor plan, it's, I think we're pretty much completely down the track of that in terms of the auditorium, the spaces, the foyer that's around it. I think the only fit-out areas that still have some areas is the merril fit-out. But even that's basically worked off a floor plan that's been signed off. So I don't think there's a lot of scope for change to the floor plans at all. I think they're pretty much locked in.
Okay, I just wonder how much current elected members know of the ultimate plans for the town hall and particularly given that you're talking about Merrill Suites, how that might impact on, you know, our future accommodation?
Yeah, and it's the council civic aspect of it, and again, it hasn't changed right from the outset, is that the debating chamber basically returns as a debating chamber. It has a mixed use to make sure that effectively it's got greater utilisation. So the school of music basically also utilise the debating chamber, but the debating chamber becomes available for council to replace basically this meeting room as the council's debating chamber. The Merrill Suite again is no change to that. That's always been part of the project to relocate or to provide the Merrill Suite down in the town hall in the same area that the old Merrill Suite was. In terms of then the other spaces, the other spaces support the performance aspects and the tenants, so Vacune and ZSO.
Okay, just given how much we use this room, you know, shared, the idea of a shared space. I just wondered, do actually wonder how that might work, but anyway.
Yeah, and I think probably because I've been here a bit longer than most years, is the old debating chamber was used for council. And so that's where you had your council meetings. Your committee meetings were still in a meeting room of this type of nature.
It was before my time, that's how long it's been. All right, okay, thanks.
Thanks. We have councillor Calvert, then councillor Fong.
Thank you. And my question is about the Tanaka Civic Precinct. One, it's mentioned in the spatial plan as an opportunity site, but there's no reference in the spatial plan to the framework that's being finalised around the space. Can you, so what I'm really looking for is that two parts of the organisation are joined up.
Yeah, and so the framework at the moment doesn't exist. But once you adopt the framework, then the framework will inform the district plan. So I think that there will be the joined-up nature of our planning documents. It's just a sequencing issue that the spatial plan, that work has started a long time ago. But effectively, once you determine the framework for Tanaka, that will become the document that informs council's planning documents and the district plan for our areas.
So do you think that it's worthwhile then?
Just quickly, and so the framework was written by a planner and I spent several sessions with the planner in writing it. So it's transferable to the district plan.
Okay, so do you think it'd be worthwhile noting that's within the summary of the spatial plan under the opportunity cited Tanaka Civic Precinct, that there is a, there is a framework being developed?
Oh, so Diane Liam's mentioned that he doesn't see a problem with that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got.
Councillor Fong.
Kira, Danny and Peter. So mine is around the decision on mob and cab. And I'm seeing that you're saying there'll be a dashboard, so assuming there'll be a plan and strategy alongside that. But my question is around, will there be a strategy to take a circular economy approach and, you know, the recovery of resource around that and how we'll manage that? And I guess if not, would it be useful to include an amendment on that?
Yeah, look, and I think we'll probably take guidance from you. There's a lot of water to go under the bridge of mob and cab in terms of can we demolish it, how we demolish it. And I think we'll take a lead from you that essentially a climate-sensitive approach to demolition is probably appropriate and one that we would then look at and come back to you with at that time.
So just to confirm, an amendment would be useful in that regard?
I don't think it's an amendment to anything at the moment.
Oh, sorry, it's an, okay, so just a...
I think what we do is we take away the intent from that we hear and we bring it back to you when we come back with discussions and what's happening with mob. But mob's got a lot of water in terms of its
Agreed, yeah.
consenting process before we come back with any decisions.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, no, but still a lot of water.
Yeah, yeah, to go. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's the end of the list of questions. So thanks, officers, I'm guessing. So is there anyone who wishes to move this motion? The mayor will second it. Was there any debate? It was a very good Q and A. No debate, but that's how we like it. No writer reply then, I suppose. Good, well, I now put the motion which has been moved in second. Those in favour, press one, and those against, press two. I thought I had, but I didn't, did I? Yeah. Good, all right. Thanks, good Q and A, guys. Now invite Mike to come up and talk to us about the sludge minimisation paper. Steve Hutchison and Tonya Haskell from Wellington Water as well. Cheers, good to see you.
Well, yeah.
Go, Mike.
Yep, good morning, good morning, councillors. Look, we're still in the establishment phase for this project. It is very complex and still a work in progress. A couple of things, though. First is we're shaping up the governance. It feels like there are two work streams, as we say in the report. One is around the complexities of financing using the Infrastructure Financing and Funding Act 2020, and the other is around the construction. Now, with the first, with the IFF, we're in deep discussion with Crown Infrastructure Partners at the moment. Crown Infrastructure Partners also have a relationship with Treasury and the Ministry of Housing and Urban Development. So we've got a very complex thing going on there with the Crown with respect to the funding around this. With respect to the construction and the technical aspects, Wellington Water really providing the lead on that and providing us with detailed advice in the business case that you have, that Tonya and Steve can talk to if you have any questions. I really just wanted to make the point that this is novel, the first time this legislation has been used in this way. So we're still feeling our way. We spent an afternoon yesterday going through this with Crown Infrastructure Partners, their advisers and with Wellington Water. We are scheduled to come back to you on the 16th of September at the Finance Committee, FNP, to talk to and give you a further update on where we're at with the arrangements around this. So happy to take any questions, councillors.
Okay, councillor Bennett, I believe you had a question?
Thank you, I have a few. First of all, it's good that you're here, Tonya. It does seem that there are some legitimate questions to raise around Wellington Water's capacity to undertake the work around here. I see, because when I read the documentation, there's a clear positioning movements going on. And I see the point around that's made about the risk that the rest of the region will see that where you are more interested, you know, or you'll get diverted by that rather than all the other issues. And of course, Wellington's got issues too. So can you just talk a little bit more about how you think you will be able to accommodate this work plus all the other critical things as a start off?
That's the leading question across the region for all sorts of infrastructure.
Oh, yeah, that's true, that's true, yeah.
No problem talking to it. So what we've done with this project is that we are separating it out from how we're delivering the rest of the council programme. So normally, we would have our major projects team and our renewals team doing the bulk of the work. And in this instance, what we're doing is we're setting a completely separate project and project team just to deliver the next phase of the sludge minimisation project. When it, our procurement strategy is based around setting up an alliance. And as we go through that process, that alliance will pick up more and more of the actual design and creation of the project. So it becomes, the people that are involved in the setup will move into the alliance and then the alliance will pick up most of the creation of the project from the alliance. We're looking for external suppliers to support that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Look, the proposed solution does talk about reasonably significant carbon reductions, Mike. Is it possible to get more? Maybe, that's not the right person to ask.
So the actual carbon reductions here don't come from the sludge processing itself, apart from how that freezes up to minimise waste at the landfill. So yes, the big carbon win here is in what we do with the landfill after we have taken sludge out of the landfill.
But the actual, the actual process, though? How carbon intensive is it?
It's pretty well optimised to, you know, minimise external energy inputs and get the energy from the sludge, you know.
So is it kind of, does it balance out?
Pretty well, the exact balance is, you know, subject to working through the details. But that first process of lysis, that's to pressure cook to make sure that they can get as much bio gas out of that sludge to reuse in the drying process and for electricity production.
Yeah, so you know I'm concerned that we don't use unsustainable resource to power this, so, yeah. And just the last question, the construction time is 2024, which is getting us very, very close to our 2026 objective, Mike. So are you confident that there won't be any, too many issues so that we then miss our timeline?
I'm as confident as might be expected at this point in the process.
Folks, I've just circulated a letter that came a week ago or so, was addressed to the mayor from Geoff Dangerfield, the Chair of Wellington Water, to address the capacity issues raised by councillor Pannett, so I'll table that. I don't know, Mike, if you want to speak to it, or Tom?
No, thanks, Mr Chair.
Okay, well, I can speak to it. Okay, any other questions, councillor Foon?
Tanakoto, good to see you. So just, I've got about three questions, if that's okay. So one is building on councillor Pannett's, just around the timeline, like are we still confident the timeline we've been talking about in the long term plan that we'll still be able to work toward that?
Yes, as confident as you might expect, so the key though, just to be clear on that, so construction at this stage is scheduled, well, is planned to be finished in 2024. We think we're going to be in, well, we know that our landfill concerns expire in 2026. Now that very much depends on how much waste goes into the landfill over the next few years, of course, but there is a wee bit of play around that, and we had a quietly year last year, so we did actually manage to catch back, grab back a little bit of the landfill airspace.
Okay. Just around the resolutions that we made at the, one of the last meetings around business cases and working with the community, I'm just assuming that we're backing up trying to arrange the, you know, get the governance arrangements, right? But is that all still in the plan to how we'll proceed once we've got the governance situation right?
Do you mean with the local community?
Yeah. Yeah, so they were just, yeah.
So, yeah.
So as part of the documentation suite that we've had to produce to Wellington City and CIP to support the delivery of the project, we've put forward a consenting and communications plan because we still need to get the designation extended to the new land, and that in and of itself requires a good conversation with EWE and affected residents and businesses around that area. So there is that plan in place and it's available to council if you want to have a look.
That would be great, thank you. And last question, just on page, we're talking about the operating costs on our page 17. So you're estimating between three and five annually. Can you just refresh on what we're currently paying annually to run the operation at Maua Point? Is it above or below?
The existing treatment plant costs a little bit more than that annually in the order of 10 million, I can't remember the exact figure.
Good, thank you.
Councillor Pannett?
Just got another question, Mike, while we're on it. The need to extend the landfill, given we've now got just a little bit more time up our sleeves, can we escalate our efforts, obviously this is very important, but there are other things that we need to do so that we can prevent this happening?
So the future of the landfill is very much dependent on the decisions that we take around sewage sludge. I would like to give you more detailed advice on that than giving it to you on the fly, I haven't come prepared to talk about that. But can I just say that if councillors want to close the landfill, if that's what you're getting at, then we should resolve that early and clearly and plan around that. But there are some significant financial consequences in particular from taking that decision. But I think that requires some analysis and advice in itself, and I'm reluctant to make that advice on the fly.
So just looking at some of my, the relevant councillors here, I don't know if a paper would be appropriate, but I think this is an absolutely critical issue, and obviously for some of us, just opening up or extending a landfill is just not acceptable, so.
Thanks, I've got a couple of questions. In paragraph 13 of the paper, talks about there was even a vibe between those who wish to use a government funding arrangement and those who wish council to fund it, which seems intuitively odd. Can you maybe just unpack, how did the submitters wanting council to fund it envisage council funding it? And why was there a barrier to utilising the government funding?
Mr Chair, I don't think we actually have any particular insights into that, people were just clicking on a particular button. So it was a surprise to us as well, but of the 2,000 odd submitters, that's what they told us.
Okay. And the other question I had is, paragraph four in the background talks about solid waste and wastewater accounting for 88 odd per cent of our gross emissions. I seem to recall when we discussed the project and approved going to the next stage, that actually the carbon emissions saving were actually a bit less than what was anticipated, but I'm reading this differently now, so am I missing something in this?
So just to make the point that of itself, this won't remove a whole bunch of our emissions, but what it does enable us to do, which is the point that councillor Pannett's getting at, enables us to do a much more, a much deeper waste minimisation and remove other wastes from the landfill. But until we get rid of sludge, we can't do any of that.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay. Did Mayor Foster?
Three questions, some of the follow ups from other people's questions. First one of them is the sludge component of the emissions, can you just, it's following on from the Chair's question. So I recall it as relatively modest, but it'd be interesting to know if you actually have a bit of a feel for that.
I don't have the exact number.
One percent?
Of the landfill.
Of the landfill's emissions. So if we were producing, well, let's say we're producing $2 million worth of, or requiring $2 million worth of carbon credits, we're only saving $20,000 worth of carbon credits a year from the sludge treatment alone.
Do it translate directly into the money?
Do you have an answer to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool, okay, right. Okay, that is what it is, right, cool. Second one is just following up from Laurie's question, the sludge cost, I thought where she was going to go is the sludge cost versus the existing treatment of the sludge, not the sewage treatment plant. But at the moment, we have, at the moment, we've got to pump the sludge, obviously ignoring the cost of the, we don't have to fix another Mount Albert tunnel again, but ignoring that, but the cost of actually running it from Maua Point through to, through that tunnel system and then dewatering it, what does that cost us a year?
I couldn't give you a figure off the top of my head, it's relatively cheap. It's some power, obviously lifting it up, you know, 200 metres and some power for centrifuges. But the bulk of the current sludge costs are in the landfill disposal charges.
Right, it'd be good to just get a bit of an understanding because the three to five million a year is a total cost, but if we're avoiding some costs as well, that's helpful.
Yep, and of course there's the cost of disposal at the moment that is paid for by the sludge side, but actually, of course, the revenue comes back to us at the landfill.
No, I'm aware of that, aware of that. And just, and the final question, just picking up Iain's question about landfills. So if you're going to give us advice, it's not only the financial cost, but it's also the fact that unless we actually stop producing waste, full stop, it's going somewhere, we might want to export it to somebody else, but that comes at a significant cost, including to the environment, and it's going to hold somebody else's bit of ground rather than our bit of ground. So if you're going to give us some feedback on that, you need to cover all of those things.
Sure, and actually it's a national discussion as well with the review to exporting waste that we do as a country, so the same thing applies regionally as to whether we should be shifting our waste outside of the region.
Yep, no, cool, thank you.
Councillor Foon, did you have another question?
Sure do. I just noticed that it feels like in some of the, the way that we're framing the need, we're talking about the waste minimisation and the carbon objectives which are crucial, but I'm noticing that the resilience aspect seems to be slipping out of the point that, and actually, you know, this came out of the pipe that burst and that we were having to truck the sludge around the south coast to the landfill. So I guess is the resilience aspect still seen as one of the critical reasons, you know, reasons for doing this? And if so, is that something we can maintain in the communications?
Yeah, the resilience was one of four or five key points in the business case, it was definitely there, it just might not have come through the covering paper quite as strongly as it could have.
I'd love to keep seeing that at the top because I think that's an important aspect, critical, thank you.
And just to follow up on that point, we're discussing our spatial plan and we know that Corori is constrained as a consequence of wastewater, and I'm just surprised, this is about sludge minimisation, so I won't go into that subject in too much detail, but I'm wondering whether the redundant sludge pipes that do connect to the landfill where Corori sludge ends up could be reversed to take it through to Maua Point and that way facilitate, you know, debottlenecking Corori in some respect.
Potentially, but they're quite a long way away from Corori, the start of them, and I guess the sizings, they're probably a bit too small for the sort of flows we're talking about for Corori, so there'd be some major challenges in trying to repurpose those.
Councillor Rush, we have to truck it from Corori to the landfill anyway, so it's actually just moving it to Maua Point. So we can, we can look at the analysis for what the relative benefits are, but I think in terms of your capital outlay at the start, better just to turn the trucks at a different intersection and head to the Maua Point.
So duly given and undertaking to come back with some advice on that?
We can, yeah.
Right. Yes. I suggest then that if there's no further questions, thanks very much to officers for my speaking notes. And have we got a mover? And councillor Foon will move. Councillor O'Neill will second, is there any debate? Oh, would you like to speak? Sorry. This is how they do it at Pararo, Wellington Water as well, none of this.
Kora, thank you, thanks for coming in. I would like to speak.
I would like to listen.
It is my pleasure to introduce this paper today, and it's really good and important to see the progress that is happening. And I just would like to thank everyone that's working on it, thank you to the team from Wellington Water and our own teams for the work that's going on. And I know that in the community, it's got a great deal of interest, and I'm really excited about the solutions you're talking about, about the circular, using the energy to energise the system from the sludge. So that's a really great story for Wellington to be able to tell. We're still at the beginning and there's a long way to go, so I urge everyone to keep working on your professional relationships development and make sure that we, yeah, it'd be great to see a good governance team on this for Wellington. So yeah, just a reminder, it's a critical part of the growth for our city, that actually this part of infrastructure that people really don't, isn't sexy and people don't want to talk about, it's really critical. It's good to acknowledge the costs, just a reminder that it costs $10 million a year to process our poo. And actually, you know, so any, so it doesn't go away, you're paying for it. But also, also there are other drivers for this, and that was acknowledging the resilience aspect, how important it is to get a better system for our city, particularly in our earthquake prone city, that we need to meet our climate and waste minimisation goals, and also, yeah, so our ecological goals. And actually, that is to me what is at the heart of this, that a lot of this is unraveled from really wanting to protect our environment and do everything we can, yeah, for our biodiversity, protecting Zelandia for our waterways, and so, yeah, it's not a silo, it connects, links into everything. So just want to acknowledge the process, acknowledge where we are in the process, thank everyone for their work and just, yeah, really looking forward to seeing it continue, thank you.
Thanks, speaking list, anyone else?
Seconding.
You'll seconding, would you like to speak now or hold?
Yes, please, I'd like to speak.
To listen.
Thank you, chairperson, thank you, chairperson. Just briefly, I would like to talk and welcome the opportunity to second and really just reiterate again how much of a significant proposal this is. We've heard from ELT in the last weeks around our dependence on the landfill and about how this kind of record investment in our long term plan, and I want to quickly commend councillor Foon and many of our other waste champions out at the landfill, and Mike and Helen and the whole team out there for following through with this work in Wellington Water as well. It truly is turning the tides on waste and particularly just doing more consultations around our parks and our green spaces and our rolling hills on the other side of the landfill and the impact and how close we are at encroaching on Zelandia. I think it's a really important initiative to have funded and something that makes me really proud to see within this triennium the narrative change. Briefly, just like to note that we can't meet our carbon waste reduction targets without funding and fully going through with sludge minimisation, solid waste and wastewater account for 88.6% of our gross admissions in this area, and so it is not just ecologically sustaining, but sustaining our planning for growth work and also our climate and ensuring that we meet our own Tiata Kura obligations as well.
Turned it off, thanks, I've got a couple of things that I will say. I guess what I would say is that I remain concerned about costs and cost escalation, so, and noting that's no one's fault, it's just the environment, but we should be prepared that when further work is done, that the bill will be bigger, certainly won't be smaller, and that's just a function of the market. And I think we need to do something as much as we can internally to try and manage those risks. The other thing I'd like to just say about Wellington Water's capacity is, although in the near two years that I've been involved with Wellington Water, there's been a lot of things that have gone wrong with the network, the work to address those has been flawless. The Willis Street Dixon Street repair was on time and on budget, things are going really well at Amoromoro, I'm touching wood though because it's not over, and other fixes that we saw, for example, on Queen's Birthday weekend, we've got the Jewell West Key fix, so their execution has been flawless and I'm 100% supportive of them being able to execute this project when it comes to that decision.
Councillor Pannett?
So thank you very much to staff for all the hard work that they put in. Look, it's been quite a long road to actually get as far as we've got on this one, so that's much appreciated. And thank you councillor Rush for your comments around the capacity of Wellington Water. Look, that gives us some reassurance, but obviously we need to tightly monitor because of all the issues in the water space and because of previous assurances that we've been given. Look, just on the future of the landfill, I feel we're making some progress. When I hit the waste portfolio, the officers were talking about 100 year capacity. We got it down to 35 years, we've now got, you know, at least a bit more time to work on some solutions. But this is absolutely urgent and it does touch on the point that we're going to be discussing in the infrastructure submission, because I'm not entirely in agreement with officers on the point they make around waste. Infrastructure is absolutely critical, people will do the right thing if they are given the options. I'm very confident about I'm very confident about that. This is a green city and people just need the right tools. At the moment, they are not able to because we don't have the systems in place. So, look, maybe, I don't know how long we're going to go, but maybe at morning tea I can just talk to the chair and the deputy chair and councillor Foo about whether it would be appropriate to get some advice about the future of the landfill. I take Mr Mendons's point that an early approach would be sensible. But I think if we are serious about the climate and ecological crisis, managing our waste is absolutely critical. We need to manage our resources much, much better. But thank you, look, it's really great to see so much work done. There's some very thorough analysis in there and I look forward to further progress.
Anyone else write a reply? Oh, there is councillor Free. You're on. Oh, that's what we like. Write a reply.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. And yes, I look forward to supporting Wellington Water and the project team and seeing how that rolls out. And yes, acknowledging your comments councillor Rush about how well Wellington Water have done, particularly with Amauro Moro as well. It's been great to see that project coming on so quickly. In fact, I think we need to find more money for it urgently at this end. But yeah, I just look forward to seeing Wellington become wildly famous about our poo solution.
The Rush Flush. Right, well, on that endorsement of the Rush Flush, I now put the motion, which has been moved and seconded. There's a soundbite, Damien. A thumbs up or down? You can't hear us.
I couldn't hear you, Shaun. You weren't speaking in your mic. Have you called the vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, Damien. Do I have to go over the Rush Flush joke again then? That's carried, so we're going to adjourn for morning tea. Land? Thank you, folks. Just updated spatial plan, I'm guessing. So John Vrenz is here to introduce this paper and answer any questions. Is councillor Calvert back online?
This is a fairly straightforward land transfer from, how do you read? From NZTA to council for some segregation strips required to restrict access to Murphy Street, where the off-ramp merges with traffic coming from Tinnacoree for traffic safety reasons, really. We are the acquiring authority, so we're required to pay all the costs. But they are transferring the land itself for a peppercorn amount if demanded. Any questions?
Think councillor comment?
Yes. First of all, can you tell us why NZTA has decided they want to sell this land at this point?
We, through the chair, we requested the segregation strips. It was NZTA's land they were disposing of. So they had to survey the land, create the strips, and it all goes into their own name. So for us to own them and control them, it just needs to be transferred to council.
So why then, why do we need to own the segregation strips? What's the safety issue that means we need to own this?
That's local authority road that adjoins. So they could potentially could sell the strips to the adjoining owner. There'd be no segregation strips between the legal road and the fee simple land adjoining.
Which would mean that they could put a driveway?
That they could, yes, they could put a driveway there.
That would come right out into basically where the off-ramp?
Yeah, that's right.
Any other questions? No, thanks very much, John. Gosh, can I get my notes? Okay, thanks. Does anyone want to move this? I think councillor Sparrow at one point indicated a desire to do so, seconded. Wolf? Councillor Sparrow, do you have anything to say?
Just a quick comment. When everyone's listening, this is very, very important stuff. Unlike the previous paper in which councillor Foo assured us there was a great deal of interest in the community, there may not be quite the same level of interest in the community in this paper. But it still includes matters that need to be dealt with, which we're doing here. And I like the expression, the impossibility of $1 changing hands if demanded. It's yet to be seen whether it will be demanded. Right, I move it, councillor Wolf. Let's vote.
Would you like to speak, councillor? Okay. Is there any debate? No debate, no write a reply then. Shall we vote? I'll put the motion, it's been moved and seconded, blah, blah. I'll put the motion, it's been moved to second and blah blah. I'll put the motion, it's been moved to second and blah blah. I'm already seconded these notes. I'm already seconded these notes. I'm already seconded these notes. Is councillor, councillor Calvert's on board? Is councillor, councillor Calvert's on board? Is councillor, councillor Calvert's on board?
Yep. Yep. Yep.
Councillor Pennett, you going to vote? Councillor Pennett, are you going to vote? Councillor Pennett, are you going to vote? Or are you going to disavow your responsibilities? Or are you going to disavow your responsibilities? Or are you going to disavow your responsibilities? And that's carried. And that's carried. And that's carried. Now. 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 I haven't had a chance to talk with the owner about moving her amendments pro forma. I haven't had a chance to talk with the owner about moving her amendments pro forma. I haven't had a chance to talk with the owner about moving her amendments pro forma. Shall I do a one-minute adjournment? Shall I do a one-minute adjournment? Shall I do a one-minute adjournment? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, can we do the adjournment after Q and A because I might have an addition after the questions. Well, can we do the adjournment after Q and A because I might have an addition after the questions? Well, can we do the adjournment after Q and A because I might have an addition after the questions?
Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah. Right, I'd like to invite Geoff Moana to come and introduce the next paper, Right, I'd like to invite Geoff Moana to come and introduce the next paper, Right, I'd like to invite Geoff Moana to come and introduce the next paper, which is the draft submission to the government about their infrastructure strategy. which is the draft submission to the government about their infrastructure strategy. which is the draft submission to the government about their infrastructure strategy.
You have the submission, we're happy to take questions. You have the submission, we're happy to take questions. You have the submission, we're happy to take questions.
Councillor Pennett. Councillor Pennett. Councillor Pennett.
So can I just check, you're happy with my amendments around strengthening the vision and outcomes So can I just check, you're happy with my amendments around strengthening the vision and outcomes So can I just check, you're happy with my amendments around strengthening the vision and outcomes to reflect our treaty partnership? to reflect our treaty partnership? to reflect our treaty partnership? I just didn't want it stuck in one little section. I just didn't want it stuck in one little section. I just didn't want it stuck in one little section. And the other thing was, and I thought, actually, I do want to check your thinking. And the other thing was, and I, actually, I do want to check your thinking. And the other thing was, and I, actually, I do want to check your thinking. I would have thought earthquakes would have been present in the submission. I would have thought earthquakes would have been present in the submission. I would have thought earthquakes would have been present in the submission. Was there any reason why it wasn't? Was there any reason why it wasn't? Was there any reason why it wasn't?
Probably only because we were answering very specific questions and at this stage it's still a very high-level document. Probably only because we were answering very specific questions and at this stage it's still a very high-level document. Probably only because we were answering very specific questions and at this stage it's still a very high-level document.
Right, okay, so but you're okay with talking about... Right, okay, so but you're okay with talking about... Right, okay, so but you're okay with talking about...
Okay, we can, we'll find somewhere to weave it in. Okay, we can, we'll find somewhere to weave it in. Okay, we can, we'll find somewhere to weave it in.
So just councillors, this is just about more affordable techniques for strengthening So just councillors, this is just about more affordable techniques for strengthening and funding tools to, to get the work done. So just councillors, this is just about more affordable techniques for strengthening and funding tools to, to get the work done. and funding tools to get the work done. And also councillor Paul's suggestion around looking at some of the money for And also councillor Paul's suggestion around looking at some of the money for And also councillor Paul's suggestion around looking at some of the money for roading being put more into active modes. roading being put more into active modes. roading being put more into active modes.
So that was suggesting that they also look at reprioritising existing funding, not just new funding, is that right? So that was suggesting that they also look at reprioritising existing funding, not just new funding, is that right? So that was suggesting that they also look at reprioritising existing funding, not just new funding, is that right? Yep, yeah, no, we can do that. Yep, yeah, no, we can do that. Yep, yeah, no, we can do that.
Yep, okay. Yep, okay. Yep, okay. Sorry, I'm just having some problems with the technology, so I'll come back and if other people have got questions. Sorry, I'm just having some problems with the technology, so I'll come back and if other people have got questions. Sorry, I'm just having some problems with the technology, so I'll come back and if other people have got questions.
Councillor Conde. Councillor Conde. Councillor Conde.
Thanks. 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 On page 121, we're talking about the climate adaptation. On page 121, we're talking about the climate adaptation. On page 121, we're talking about the climate adaptation. And it says, in many cases, local authority assets provide protection to private property. And it says, in many cases, local authority assets provide protection to private property. And it says, in many cases, local authority assets provide protection to private property. And when it's no longer viable to maintain those assets, there's likely to be community concern and expectation of compensation. And when it's no longer viable to maintain those assets, there's likely to be community concern and expectation of compensation. And when it's no longer viable to maintain those assets, there's likely to be community concern and expectation of compensation. Can we also add something in there about kind of cost sharing with private owners? Can we also add something in there about kind of cost sharing with private owners? Can we also add something in there about kind of cost sharing with private owners? Because I think that's, we're building a seawall to protect our roach, Because I think that's, we're building a seawall to protect our roach, Because I think that's, we're building a seawall to protect our roach, but there's a private benefit to the houses that sit behind that roach. but there's a private benefit to the houses that sit behind that roach. but there's a private benefit to the houses that sit behind that roach. I think cost sharing is kind of an important issue. I think cost sharing is kind of an important issue. I think cost sharing is kind of an important issue. Can we? Can we? Can we?
So I think we can, I mean, I wouldn't want to make a decision that we're saying that that's exactly what we'd do So I think we can, I mean, I wouldn't want to make a decision that we're saying that that's exactly what we'd do So I think we can, I mean, I wouldn't want to make a decision that we're saying that that's exactly what we'd do when it comes to climate adaptation, but we can certainly put in that issues around cost sharing need to be considered where there's private benefit. when it comes to climate adaptation, but we can certainly put in that issues around cost sharing need to be considered where there's private benefit. when it comes to climate adaptation, but we can certainly put in that issues around cost sharing need to be considered where there's private benefit.
That's all that I want. That's all that I want. That's all that I want. And I think councillor Pennett would be happy to add that little change into her set of, or whatever it is we've got working. And I think councillor Pennett would be happy to add that little change into her set of, or whatever it is we've got working. And I think councillor Pennett would be happy to add that little change into her set of, or whatever it is we've got working. That's all good. That's all good. That's all good. I do have one more question, which was on page 124. I do have one more question, which was on page 124. I do have one more question, which was on page 124. We were talking about the population strategy and we were talking about the concept of a population load. We were talking about, about the population strategy and we were talking about the concept of a population load. We were talking about, about the population strategy and we were talking about the concept of a population load. And I have no idea what a population load is and it sounds kind of creepy. And I have no idea what a population load is and it sounds kind of creepy. And I have no idea what a population load is and it sounds kind of creepy.
Over to Geoff. Over to Geoff. Over to Geoff.
That's a really, a really good question. That's a really, a really good question. That's a really, a really good question. I'm just holding the pen on this. I'm just holding the pen on this. I'm just holding the pen on this. So the, the question here was like, quite often we are setting expectations around environmental impact So I, the, the question here was like, quite often we are setting expectations around environmental impact So I, the, the question here was like, quite often we are setting expectations around environmental impact in many other parts of the, you know, the economy. in many other parts of the, you know, the economy. in many other parts of the, you know, the economy. So is there a question here about when we're talking about future, you know, future spatial planning So is there a question here about when we're talking about future, you know, future spatial planning So is there a question here about when we're talking about future, you know, future spatial planning and things like that as a country, should we be reflecting some sort of expectations around, and things like that as a country, should we be reflecting some sort of expectations around, and things like that as a country, should we be reflecting some sort of expectations around, you know, population projections as well in particular, although obviously we have very little control of that. you know, population projections as well in particular, although obviously we have very little control of that. you know, population projections as well in particular, although obviously we have very little control of that. So that is a comment that's come through from officers so that, you know, so we can start then looking at total environment, So that is a comment that's come through from officers so that, you know, so we can start then looking at total environment, So that is a comment that's come through from officers so that, you know, so we can start then looking at total environment, total environmental impact in particular areas as populations change. total environmental impact in particular areas as populations change. total environmental impact in particular areas as populations change.
I think it's just using nutrient loading as an analogy. I think it's just using nutrient loading as an analogy. I think it's just using nutrient loading as an analogy. Would you like us to change that word? Would you like us to change that word? Would you like us to change that word? Okay. Okay. Okay.
It just, it just makes me very uncomfortable, you know. It just, it just makes me very uncomfortable, you know. It just, it just makes me very uncomfortable, you know.
It's fine. It's fine. It's fine.
Yeah, you know, people, people, welcome, welcome to come to our country and our city Yeah, you know, people, people, welcome, welcome to come to our country and our city Yeah, you know, people, people, welcome, welcome to come to our country and our city and I don't think we should be talking about them as a load. and I don't think we should be talking about them as a load. and I don't think we should be talking about them as a load. It just makes me very uncomfortable. It just makes me very uncomfortable. It just makes me very uncomfortable.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
But, yeah, but I'm comfortable with the point that's being made, so thank you. But, yeah, but I'm comfortable with the point that's being made, so thank you. But, yeah, but I'm comfortable with the point that's being made, so thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Councillor Paul? Councillor Paul? Councillor Paul? That's you, yeah. That's you, yeah. That's you, yeah.
I just wondered why that particular wording for B. I just wondered why that particular wording for B? I just wondered why that particular wording for B? Like, what does that, what does that really even mean? Like, what does that, what does that really even mean? Like, what does that, what does that really even mean? Oh, sorry, Ione's amendments, the investment structures to facilitate Maori investment and participation, like, Oh, sorry, Ione's amendments, the investment structures to facilitate Maori investment and participation, like, Oh, sorry, Ione's amendments, the investment structures to facilitate Maori investment and participation, like, just wondering what that means. just wondering what that means. just wondering what that means.
That's, that's an amendment which I have provided, that's got officer's support, yeah. That's, that's an amendment which I have provided, that's got officer's support, yeah. That's, that's an amendment which I have provided, that's got officer's support, yeah.
But it just went from like a Tirtiriti amendment to this. But it just went from like a Tirtiriti amendment to this. But it just went from like a Tirtiriti amendment to this.
No, 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 councillor Pennett's got her own amendments, which I've looked at and would like to suggest we move them. No, 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 councillor Pennett's got her own amendments, which I've looked at and would like to suggest we move them. No, 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 councillor Pennett's got her own amendments, which I've looked at and would like to suggest we move them.
So I'm asking officers what this means. So I'm asking officers what this means. So I'm asking officers what this means.
So this was, well, this is an amendment from councillor Rush, which I'm sure he'll speak to at some point, So this was, well, this is an amendment from councillor Rush, which I'm sure he'll speak to at some point, So this was, well, this is an amendment from councillor Rush, which I'm sure he'll speak to at some point, which is looking at establishing some kind of agency which can coordinate around low carbon energy which is looking at establishing some kind of agency which can coordinate around low carbon energy which is looking at establishing some kind of agency which can coordinate around low carbon energy in a holistic way for the country. in a holistic way for the country. in a holistic way for the country. I think that's basically it. I think that's basically it. I think that's basically it. And all he's asking is that we, we add something in saying. And all he's asking is that we, we add something in saying. And all he's asking is that we, we add something in saying. And then the second one was looking to do more to make sure that Maori investment and participation And then the second one was looking to do more to make sure that Maori investment and participation And then the second one was looking to do more to make sure that Maori investment and participation can be involved in infrastructure development as well. can be involved in infrastructure development as well. can be involved in infrastructure development as well.
It is one of the questions which is raised by the, in the Q and A submission, It is one of the questions which is raised by the, in the Q and A submission, It is one of the questions which is raised by the, in the Q and A submission, what steps could be taken to unlock greater investment by Maori? what steps could be taken to unlock greater investment by Maori? what steps could be taken to unlock greater investment by Maori? So, and we, we made the comment, well, So, and we, we made the comment, well, So, and we, we made the comment, well, in that we didn't talk about structures at that point, but we said, look, that's, that's a good thing, in that we didn't talk about structures at that point, but we said, look, that's, that's a good thing, in that we didn't talk about structures at that point, but we said, look, that's, that's a good thing, provided that, you know, it's holistic and also it actually must generate a return for the, those who are investing. provided that, you know, it's holistic and also it actually must generate a return for the, those who are investing. provided that, you know, it's holistic and also it actually must generate a return for the, those who are investing. So this is a similar point, saying that actually we should support investment structures to facilitate that investment. So this is a similar point, saying that actually we, we should support investment structures to facilitate that investment. So this is a similar point, saying that actually we, we should support investment structures to facilitate that investment.
I'll expand on that when appropriate. I'll expand on that when appropriate. I'll expand on that when appropriate. So councillor Pennett, are you? So councillor Pennett, are you? So councillor Pennett, are you? Councillor Foohun? Councillor Foohun? Councillor Foohun? Councillor Foohun, when are we going to get Ione's amendments? Councillor Foohun, when are we going to get Ione's amendments? Councillor Foohun, when are we going to get Ione's amendments?
I was quite excited reading this, even though we're deeply involved in something else at the moment. I was quite excited reading this, even though we're deeply involved in something else at the moment. I was quite excited reading this, even though we're deeply involved in something else at the moment. So I'm on page 125, talking about congestion pricing. So I'm on page 125, talking about congestion pricing. So I'm on page 125, talking about congestion pricing. So there are two paragraphs on our submission there. So there are two paragraphs on our submission there. So there are two paragraphs on our submission there. Particularly, I guess what I'm very inspired by is the model in London Particularly, I guess what I'm very inspired by is the model in London Particularly, I guess what I'm very inspired by is the model in, in London where they are using congestion charging, but then actually putting that funding back into PT or public transport. where they are using congestion charging, but then actually putting that funding back into PT or public transport. where they are using congestion charging, but then actually putting that funding back into PT or public transport. So I wonder if we could consider on the question that says, let's, we support this initiative So I wonder if we could consider on the question that says, let's, we support this initiative So I wonder if we could consider on the question that says, let's, we support this initiative and would also favour this congestion pricing scheme being reinvested back into public transport and would also favour this congestion pricing scheme being reinvested back into public transport and would also favour this congestion pricing scheme being reinvested back into public transport or undergrounding State Highway 1 so we can have the land back. or undergrounding State Highway 1 so we can have the land back. or undergrounding State Highway 1 so we can have the land back.
Sure. 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 Very specific. Very specific. Very specific. I mean, this is, yeah, that's very, that's very specific for a very general kind of submission. I mean, this is, yeah, that's very, that's very specific for a very general kind of submission. I mean, this is, yeah, that's very, that's very specific for a very general kind of submission. But we could definitely put in that that be ring, I think we've already got in there that we want this ring fenced. But we could definitely put in that that be ring, I think we've already got in there that we want this ring fenced. But we could definitely put in that that be ring, I think we've already got in there that we want this ring fenced.
For the city. For the city. For the city.
And it could be reinvested in PT and active transport. And it could be reinvested in PT and active transport. And it could be reinvested in PT and active transport.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And, and undergrounding State Highway 1. And, and undergrounding State Highway 1. And undergrounding State Highway 1.
And undergrounding State Highway. And undergrounding State Highway. And undergrounding State Highway.
And tunnels. And tunnels. And tunnels. Now councillor Pennett. Now councillor Pennett. Now councillor Pennett.
Just in the letter, I'm just wondering about, you've said officers have responded to it. Just in the letter, I'm just wondering about, you've said officers have responded to it. Just in the letter, I'm just wondering about, you've said officers have responded to it. I'm just wondering when we put in a submission, it becomes council rather than, could you just change that little thing? I'm just wondering when we put in a submission, it becomes council rather than, could you just change that little thing? I'm just wondering when we put in a submission, it becomes council rather than, could you just change that little thing? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Any other questions? Right, amendments. Right, amendments. Right, amendments. Yeah. 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 We'll adjourn for a couple of minutes to sort the amendment. We'll adjourn for a couple of minutes to sort the amendment. We'll adjourn for a couple of minutes to sort the amendment. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
to it. I'm just wondering, when we put in a submission, it becomes council rather than, could you just change that little thing? Thank you.
Any other questions? Right, amendments. We'll adjourn for a couple of minutes to sort the amendment. Yep. Can I finish? I just wondered, Tom, can we get an update on Mauroa? Yep, thanks very much for accommodating those amendments, and I think the officers have done a great job. So thank you so much for just strengthening particularly the material around climate change. Obviously, I am very concerned about earthquakes, and I don't want climate change to eclipse that completely. So obviously, that's why there is something in there. Just, I just want to speak briefly to the last one. Councillor Conde, I think, look, that's a really helpful amendment, because I do have some issues around the way that we are thinking about who pays when we really feel the effects of climate change in the city. So we've obviously got some quite deep thinking to do, but I don't want to just put it all on to private individuals, given we all made a contribution to climate change. Kia ora. Right, I think I opened it up for debate now, don't I? Is there any debate? No debate? Okay, no, I won't exercise my writer reply then. Let's vote. Number one. Oh, God. Number two. Yep, voting on the whole thing. Councillor Conde, councillor Pennant, can you vote, please? Good, another unanimous, oh, it's wonderful. Very much, thank you very much. Okay, so the final matter on the agenda, folks, 2.5 is the forward programme. I think, Tom, you're going to say a few things?
Yeah, so the forward work schedule shown in this document is currently under, under construction. The two items that are shown for August are the Swan Lane, Garrett Street upgrade, and the Three Waters Reform, I think that's supposed to say initiative. So what we're attempting to do really is build out this forward work schedule with a number of updates on our significant programmes, really to give you that transparency and visibility on where we are at the moment. So we're going to, we've got a meeting immediately after that, and we're going to be investing a bit of time in pulling that forward work schedule together. It's, like I say, it will contain a number of periodic reports on big projects, as we did with Tinnacarrie today. And there will be, a number of those ports will simply be noting reports to give you the visibility, but equally, there will be some on the key investment decisions we need to make. As the PMO becomes more and more kind of high-performing, there will be a lot more sort of dashboard reporting that will come to this committee to give you that programme level view. And I guess the last thing I'll say is to give an undertaking that I will ensure that our paper regarding the future of the landfill goes on this forward work schedule.
Cool. The Q and A. Councillor Calvert.
Thank you. And I've just got my cat about to appear at the side of me, so excuse me. But just in terms of the forward programme, and I'm just going to relate to the spatial plan here, in terms of some of the investment opportunities that, or requirements that we need in some of our suburbs, how will this, how will your team, Tom, bring that information back? Is that information as part of the spatial plan, or is that information that's going to come back to this committee?
Rebecca, or me? Or no, what do you?
I think we'll have to, if we can, we'll just take that question on notice if we can, and we'll discuss it offline and provide an update.
Yeah, because I mean, and I asked that as an example for Corori, and the investment that's required in that suburb.
So it's the growth thing? Thanks councillor Calvert.
Thanks. And I've just got my cat about to appear at the side of me, so excuse me. But just in terms of the forward programme, and I'm just going to relate to the spatial plan here, in terms of some of the investment opportunities that, or requirements that we need in some of our suburbs, how will this, how will your team, Tom, bring that information back? Is that information as part of the spatial plan, or is that information that's going to come back to this committee?
Rebecca, or me? Or no, what do you?
I think we'll have to, if we can, we'll just take that question on notice if we can, and we'll discuss it offline and provide an update.
Yeah, because I mean, and I asked that as an example for Corori, and the investment that's required in that suburb.
So it's the growth thing?
Thanks councillor Calvert, through Mr Chairman. So I think my answer on Monday was the LTP has, well, considerable pragmatic investment infrastructure in the first three years, and I can't, at the top of my life, remember what that figure was. I think it was in the order of $14 million, that related specifically to Tawa. We had infrastructure works in the central city, and a lot of money put aside for the planning. If you recall, I made that point where we don't know what we don't know. So Wellington Water has a significant amount of money in this LTP for planning and discovering what it needs to, to do, and then that would be reported back to council at a later point in time. Does that clarify it all, councillor, your question?
Yeah, I suppose it's more, yeah, I was, I was using Corori as an example, but as an example of how investment decisions or phasing of our infrastructure comes back to council, and whether that's something that needs to come back to this committee, or is it done under the planning? I'm just, I'm just not sure, you know, like, if we moved, if we wanted to bring forward on the programme, an assessment of the infrastructure that Corori needs, where does, what happens to that?
Yeah, I'll just get Stephen to answer that.
I think in terms of the overall planning, that would be the, the planning committee, but if there was a specific proposal for investment that was already funded through the LTP, it would be back here. Kind of like a business case approach.
Okay, and if it wasn't funded by the LTP, it would be part of an annual plan?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And I just, that's it, thank you.
Councillor Phoon?
Just what we discussed, Tom, if we could also have the strategic waste review on the forward programme as well. Roughly, what date timeline are we looking at for that?
Within a calendar month.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I've got a couple for Tom. Tom, there was some discussion between myself, councillors Calvert and Fitzsimons about the potential to bring some of our minor infrastructure works in-house, and we wondered whether that might be something that you might maybe present on at our next meeting, if your workload permits. Don't do too much on it, but we might, if it's got some legs, maybe go a bit further.
Through your chair, could I suggest that I put it on the forward work schedule, but probably not next meeting?
Sure.
I mean, there are some councils around the country that still operate a forward, an in-house capability that we could also benchmark and look at, so.
Yeah.
Can I just add to, I'm sorry, Shaun? Councillor Rush? Can I just clarify your comments to Mr Williams, is that we were looking at information coming back to us within a six-month period about what it would take to, what would potentially be the options and resourcing, et cetera, or planning to bring back minor maintenance in-house rather than outsourcing it? So we weren't expecting, you know, a response within a month or anything like that, so can I just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks. I also just wanted to note, that sort of seems like it's a bit related to the traffic management work that you're doing, where you've got the business case looking at bringing traffic management in-house, and whether that might fit together somehow.
Yeah, we certainly, we are looking at that, and we're coming towards the tail end of looking at that, and we've been looking at the various delivery models, including an internal workforce. So probably a similar, similar study, but a different question, so I'll probably suggest we bring them back in, and, you know, it's two discrete pieces of work.
I was, can I finish? I just wondered, Tom, can we get an update on Mauroa?
Yep.
Thanks. Councillor Fitzsimons?
Yeah, mine was just related to that, and it was councillor Calvert and I who were working on an amendment on this, and I just wanted to just make sure you got from that, that we were also looking at city housing work, like particularly around renewals and maintenance?
Yep.
Yep.
An empire, a construction, infrastructure empire. Ministry of Works, yeah. Any other Q and A for Mr Williams? No, okay, so, who moved it? Did I?
Nobody has here.
Oh, okay, well, I'll move this. Does anyone want a second? Okay, I don't think there's much need to say, but other than thanks very much to your team, Tom, we look forward to integrating this work programme with the, you know, the long-term plan and the, and the infrastructure strategy. So that's all I need to say, is anyone, who's seconding? Jenny, councillor Conde, doesn't need to speak, okay. Anyone, any debate? Writer reply, don't need it? All right, let's vote. That's been carried, folks, so thanks very much for all your attention. Yes, 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 and I do appreciate the calibre of the questioning, particularly around the Tanaco Square. I mean, very important to all of us, and it's good to see good governance in action, so well done. Okay, please stand to say the karakia to close. In here, in here.